I'm here, what do you need?
All right, I'll entertain a motion to suspend the rules.
I'm moved.
By Mr. Lawrence, by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? It's approved on a five-o vote. If the clerk would read the items to be added to the agenda, please.
To the consent agenda, we're adding item 5JJ, resolution amending the police department budget to purchase Dell computers for dispatch in the amount of $6,970.47. Adding item 5KK, resolution authorizing an agreement professional services-
Excuse me, Carrie, just for a moment. We can't hear what the clerk's reading, and I know if we can't hear it, you can't hear it, so if you would hang on to that conversation or that thought until the meeting's over, we'll proceed. Thank you. Go ahead, Carrie.
Adding 5KK, resolution authorizing a letter agreement for professional services with Machado Patano for repairs and upgrades to the playing fields at A.J. Holloway Sports Complex.
Thank you. I'll entertain a motion to approve the amended agenda.
I'm moved.
By Mr. Lawrence. Seconded by Mr. Guines. Any discussion? All in favor? It's approved on a six-o vote. Thank you. That brings us to the mayor's report. Nothing but good news today, Mr. Mayor.
Well, I must tell you, if you're welcome, everyone. I think we've successfully got navigated cruising and a couple of events done that, and thank everyone, our people, volunteers, as well as our public safety, fire departments, for what they've done. We had a pretty successful year. I think it's the biggest ever. And, you know, we're in the middle of a lot of things, especially with the first month of the new fiscal year. Been talking with a few people about what's happening on the radar as far as, you know, personnel increases and stuff like that. So we're in the process of looking at everything. We did have a pretty good, you know, first month as far as gaming. September, we'll receive October, both sales tax and gaming tax, so it's on to a pretty good start for period one. We've had a lot of rain, a lot of things happening, and I think Mike wants to say a few things about that.
Would you allow me your mic, sir? I just wanted to give you the outcome of Operation Clean Sweep, which is now ended. We moved 76 loads, very large loads of trash from the streets of the city. That was 3,700 cubic yards. Now, we know we didn't, even though we called it Clean Sweep, we know we didn't get everything. In some cases, debris was put out after we'd gone by, and then more debris was put out. So we are continuing to target areas that call us in. What we're telling people when they call, if they say, "We missed, you missed us," we say, "Call Public Works, give them your address, we'll put you on the list and we'll get out to you." So we're working a list. Right now, we have one grapple truck north of the bay and one grapple truck south of the bay, working every day and also on the weekends. So we're trying to, you know, again, I know you're gonna have people complaining about, you know, still trash out there. If that's the case, again, have them call Public Works, we'll put them on the list and we'll go after them. Speaking of Public Works, that's one of the places we've got a lot of vacancies right now. Councilman Tisdale asked me how many vacancies we had. Seventy-four. Seventy-four vacancies out of a 650-man public, um, city staff. That's a pretty big percentage of people that are missing. Of course, a lot of that is new police positions. And fire department's in pretty good shape, not many gaps there, but a lot of vacancies in Public Works, in parks, and that's affecting their ability to get out and mow it and doing everything else. So we're working as fast as we can, and it's helpful that we raised the income, or if you will, raised the salary to a minimum wage of $12.50 an hour. It's helping us with attracting people on the low end into those entry-level positions, so hopefully we'll get some of those vacancies filled. The other thing that's going on in Public Works, and it really is a sign of the times for us, we've had a substantial number of emergency water sewer actions. I'm looking at Oak Grove, Bovoir, Perry Circle, Fairview, Martar, Broadwater. All of them were emergencies that we had to respond to and then get a contractor out to make the repairs. And it seems like that heavy weather we had a few weeks back, which just had so much infiltration into the lines, whether they be the sewer lines or the water lines, that it just overwhelmed our system. And we've got a lot of neighborhoods that are asking us for help. Lu Palafox and the enclave, Audubon Circle, Carol Lee Circle, La Bonterre, Bovoir. I mean, that's just a short list. There's a whole series of drain boxes that need to be repaired on Pops Ferry and Terra Lane we haven't gotten to yet. So I don't know what to say, except bear with us. Because we're staffed, I've told Public Works to utilize overtime, because they'll have overtime in their budget. But we're just really chasing our tails a little bit right now with the damages from those storms. Just wanted to share that with you. It's not for lack of trying.
Well, let me add too, with regard to trying, you, I think we've met since our appearances between Coastal Mississippi and actually the Board of Supervisors with regard to the cleanup effort, you know, removal of sand and emergency cleanup that we've asked, you know, first the governor, then M.D.O.T. cooperate with us, and then Coastal Mississippi understood what we were trying to do in an emergency mode. You might want to call it beautification, but it was the cleanup of the sand that's been hanging even since Zeta. So we were successful, and, Mike, I think it was about 100 loads of sand that we, the last contract we, you know, with Anticarp and the Christian Prey's Group with the design part of what we did, we moved about 100 truckloads of sand from the bees. We started from the west towards the Broadwater. Next week, Peter, I think this is next week's agenda, we're gonna use some of that 400, 200, 200, and probably 110, 507 to finish the job to go all the way to the bridge. So that's the scraping of the things that's just been pushed aside. Getting in a position where we can do and ask M.D.O.T. to finish, put the concrete, stamp concrete here and do the grading and the work we need to do on the trees, grooming of the trees and that sort of thing. That'll be on next week's agenda. Pete, is that not right?
Okay.
Okay. So that's gonna be about seven, no, it's gonna be about $570,000, something like that, finished it. We, you know, we're, again, trying to gather up the resources. We have enough, sort of, in grand anticipation money to execute that, and that'll be on next week's agenda. But it was very successful. We had a couple of meetings to plan what we need to do, and, you know, in an emergency mode, but it's just a normal get the place in top-notch condition. You've heard a couple of, you know, interactions about coastal and the counties and so forth, but we were very successful, you know, in getting anything out of both of them with regard to this particular situation. So I was very grateful and thankful that they understood our position, and we continue to move it, to move it forward. And hopefully, what we'll do will result in some things that we won't suffer this. We want to keep the sand on the beach and keep it groomed, and, like I said, resort quality outlook is what we want. And I think that I've said enough. Mike, I mean, George, you look like you want to ask me something.
Couple different things there. Appreciate y'all still working out of work, hard on, get the raises, get them in place. We're losing a lot of employees right now, but we need more. How many applications you have, Mike, like for Public Works or parks and rec? Do we have a lot of applications that's out, or we just had that many imp-
I think it's vacancies. There's about 74 positions, eh?
Get on the mic.
Yeah.
They won't hear you on TV. How you on TV?
Well, I'm well.
Okay, there's 25 applications that are pulled for maintenance workers, and we did background checks, and today I just went over it with Jill, and out of the 25, eight passed the background.
All right, so you're in a motion, maybe, behind maybe eight, 10 people?
Yes, sir. Well, I have four, five, six, seven positions open, yes.
Yeah, 'cause I mean, you're pretty short right now as far as public work, I mean, parks and rec.
Oh, yes, sir. Between logistics and setting up civic center and grass cutting, we're very short.
But keep in mind, 15 of those positions were added. So it's not like we lost 15. 15 more is what you're searching for. It's what we added to, you know, to the budget for FY22. So, you know, those 15s are new positions that you're trying to fill too.
Yeah, well, I mean, just, they do a lot to keep the parks looking good, the parks and rec. Just like clean up the highway. You know, it's a city, our parks and other things, out the city.
Keep in mind, I'll conclude my report whenever we finish this interchange, but some of the things that's added on today about, you know, the A.J. Holloway Complex and some of the things we can do that will reduce our ongoing, it'll be a one-time, you know, multiple-year addition to it, but it would reduce the amount of manpower. We need to keep that thing top-notch with some of the things we're talking about.
Yeah, 'cause you promised everybody you're gonna clean up the city, so we gotta do that.
That's it. Thank you, and that concludes my report.
The other thing, uh-
I thought.
Okay.
We're into Mr. Lawrence's report now.
Yeah, I'll continue, Tom.
Okay.
They'll go to the council.
All right, I don't think-
I'm done, I'm done. Back to the asked questions.
You can ask me questions.
Coming right to you. We have no departmental reports, let's start with council reports.
All right, no, we go back to the highways. I know you're cleaning them up.
Right.
I'll tell you what, for the last few weeks, anybody rides up in our Highway 90, Highway 90 needs to be expanded as soon as possible. We got too much medium, too much wasted space. You need three lanes on each side of Highway 90, and we got enough room to do it. It's just time to do it. We don't need a million-dollar study, we need more lanes, period. I don't know who you have to get to look at that and get it-
I can't argue that. I think we have a scheduled meeting with Brad White coming up this week. He's gonna be speaking at the Biloxi Businessmen Club, I think. So we're gonna ask him for a number of things. Bridges, of course, you know, some designated state roads, big things, some of the reports and list that we can get on. Should federal money come available, then we'll be in line. If there's designated and needs that are defined by, you know, these studies, we'll be in line. You know, we need new bridges, we need, you know, expanded roadway, saying, I don't, anybody can argue with that. We got most of the traffic coming through 92.
I don't know how long it takes, but it's just something we need to do as quick as possible. Everybody was, the cruiser was great, had a ton of cars there. I mean, but it's a sin you can't move up and down a highway in Biloxi. And I'm, I'm just, all I'm worried about is Biloxi. But I'm just saying, there's a lot of medium and a lot of room that you could actually just take out and just put more roads, and that's what it needs. You need at least three lanes on each side of Highway 90 now. So I don't know, that's something we needed to push, to keep doing. Okay, you gotta talk to M.D.O.T., but I just, something needs to be done before next year.
Well, you know, M.D.O.T. is, of course, a place to start, but you know, the federal money, nothing's done without that federal, you know, infrastructure money. So that's where we're trying to get in a position that when the asking time is asking time, we'll ask.
Yeah. I mean, there's a lot of room and a lot of space that you could actually just expand it pretty quick. Anyway, I just think that's something that needs to be, I'm gonna keep working on that till we get that done.
Right.
Thank you.
Excuse me, Mr. Guines, I think Mr. Demming wanted to follow up or had a question-
While you guys are on that topic, just out of curiosity, we looked at a, we looked at a study one time that had a, like a second-tier road-
East-west or-
I can't recall what it was, but bringing this up, it calls to concern that if we add more lanes on 90, we turn that front beach area into a freeway. And have we done any studies to look at option-
Part of Gulf regional planning was about a $400 million possibility of a parallel east-west corridor, which in effect doesn't, you know, high-speed, problematic, you know, people flying down that way in chief kind of test. If we had a parallel usable east-west corridor, you know, from the bridge, and we talked about, you know, off-ramp of Biloxi Ocean Springs Bridge all the way to the bees, and I think that's what you're saying, we don't have, expansion of, you know, they'll, the engineers and those few people that look at all of those things and quality of life issues too, I was like, what you talking about? It's a long-term, you know, long-haul kind of approach to it. But you gotta get started somewhere, and I think that's what George says. You know, we can't sit back and wish for it, we gotta be proactive in-
But it also takes money. I just wanted to make sure that we're thinking about alternative transportation of vehicles or rerouting vehicles, other than interfering with what we have on the beach right now.
Well, yeah, you know, the beach is problematic because, you know, and even, you know, the bridges that we have, you need an alternate to Highway 90. We don't have that. We have bits and pieces of it, so-
Well, there's some areas on 90 where multiple lanes are viable and appropriate, but for the long stretches, people come to our coast for the cinematic or the, whatever you call, the view, right? I mean, that's, that's really what makes it so special here, at least the beach with regard to-
You're remembering correctly, because the Gulf Coast Gulf Regional Planning Commission, which is the commission to which funnels planning money into the coast, their official position is not to widen Highway 90, but to in fact create a four-lane divided corridor up through the middle of all the cities. That's the east-west corridor the mayor is referring to, and that's on the table.
Okay, that, I think that's what I was referring to. That was the study we took that a while back. Correct. George, I'm sorry for interrupting. You're no stranger to interruptions.
He's finished. He's finished? I don't have no problem with that, you know?
All right, thank you.
If you can do the east-west corridor, that's fine, but I'm telling you, you need to expand Highway 90.
Well, the places, I think that's-
Highway 90 is not big enough to handle 40, 50,000 people coming in for cruising or anything else.
Well, you got bits and pieces of it that are through a six lane.
Time to expand Highway 90.
Thank you for your patience, Mr. Guines.
Thank you.
It's your turn. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, alrighty.
Go ahead, Felix.
Oh, I can go. Oh, thank you, alright, yeah. I just wanted to touch on something Mike said. He talked about the garbage pickup and, you know, but not even criticize Pelican waste a little bit, so when they do something good, we need to acknowledge it. They did a good job this week picking up, picking up too, so they were coming through, and they were coming through rampant, and they got everything in that area. I want to thank the mayor and all the administration staff that came out to my board meeting this past week. We got a lot accomplished. And also, I just would like to get with Walt real quick after the meeting, and also chat with the chief, chief of police, after the meeting real quick. And last but not least, happy birthday, Keith. That concludes my message.
Thank you, Mr. Guines. Ms. Newman?
Lordy, lordy, look who's 40. That's it. Happy birthday.
Thank you. Mr. Demming?
Thank you, Mr. Tisdale. Mike, I know we talked about the Carol Lee Baywood. You mentioned it in some of those areas that are, that are reaching out for help, and of course, Carol Lee and Baywood, we've had the whole neighborhood put together a petition. They feel like they've been forgotten about. Now, we addressed this during campaign time, we've had to have sections of fences taken down to get to those easements. You wanted to give an update on what we have going on and what we're planning to do. I know with all the rainfall and the shorthandedness of the city, it's been a task, but where are we at and what can we expect?
Well, let me ask about, let me answer about Carol Lee Circle first, because that correspondence just got to us overnight. I'm not sure what the problem is there, but we'll have an inspector out there walking it tomorrow. The first thing we'll, of course, be looking for is, is the easement cleared and is it flowing properly? Or has it been overgrown or, you know, is a reason it's not working right? And then if it is working right, then it's just not enough, and we'll have to figure out how to, and then we'll turn that over to the engineers to figure out where we need to tap into that drainage. And did you ask me about the bluffs too? I think probably we've been trying to, trying to get to the bluffs. We've got so many repair work jobs going on, we really didn't, haven't had a chance to, we've marked the pavement in the bluffs. There's about 8,000 square feet of concrete paving that has to be taken up and replaced, and we just haven't, haven't got past the emergency work yet.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Glavine?
Yeah, I have a few things. Happy birthday, by the way, Keith. Also, I want to thank everyone who checked on my wife. For those of you who don't know, my wife went into the hospital a little over a week ago. She had an allergic reaction, had to be put on a ventilator for three days, but she's resting at home, and she's getting a little better every day, but I want to thank everyone who called or text and checked on her, and we really appreciate that. Also, I want to talk about a little bit this item that's on the agenda. We added it today. It's regarding a feasibility study for improvements at A.J. Holloway Sportsplex. I want to thank the administration for making it a priority and getting this on the agenda today. There's a lot of people, not just in Ward 6, but that use those fields, and their kids use them, and there's outside visitors that if we do the proper enhancements and improvements, I think the economic impact would be tremendous. Upgrading to synthetic turf will cut down on the maintenance and save us there, and like I mentioned, the economic impact with people coming in and staying in the hotels, eating in the restaurants, enjoying some of the other coastal Biloxi entertainment that we have. I think the payoff is a win-win for everyone. And then the remainder of my time, I'd like to give to pickleball Tom. He wants to give us an update on a charity event that is coming up that Felcher and I have been involved with in the inaugural year, and we plan on making it bigger and better this year. Tom?
Thank you, Councilman Glavine. Yes, and on the 30th of October, we're having a nice big event called the Battle of the Pink. It's our second annual raising funds for breast cancer awareness, treatment, and patient support. This year, we have 175 players. Eighty-eight of those players are from out of state. Currently, it looks like we're gonna be able to raise over 15,000 to give to the Real Men Wear Pink organization. It's going to American Cancer Society, but the ambassadors with Real Men Wear Pink will share in these money we're giving. We have a couple of other neat things. Biloxi is gonna be the first city in the state of Mississippi to, to do a sanctioned pickleball tournament from the USA Pickleball Association. That's a big thing. That's gonna happen the first weekend of December, and that'll bring in a lot of players too. Because sanctioning means this is where people get their ratings, and they go to other tournaments and play that are sanctioned tournaments, and so it's really a big thing. First ever in the state of Mississippi. We also have a vendor that's looking in November of next year to put a pickleball tournament out at Pops Ferry, and will be one of 12 cities in the United States that are putting on these tournaments, anywhere like Myrtle Beach, Las Vegas. And the other big thing is, on the Gulf Coast Restoration Fund, that you helped us with some matching funds. The commission did rate all of the projects, 56 projects, and our pickleball court expansion was in the top 15. So I don't know if it's gonna mean anything good, but we did get rated quite high. So appreciate all your support for this program, and if you have the time, come out and play. Kevin is, Felcher is one of our players, and so is Mike. Mike's playing in the 2.5 and below, and Kevin's in the 3 and above, so it'll be a fun time, so. And then we will have a check presentation here in front of the city council with the mayor and American Cancer Society when we have all the results of the tournament, but it looks like it'll be very successful. So thanks again for your support. And thanks again for the restroom, which we're gonna get built.
Thank you, Tom, and I'd just like to point out, one of our council members up here looks pretty good in pink over here, so Councilman Guines.
That concludes my report.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett?
Thank you. I would, just a couple of things. First, I would echo what Mr. Guine said this week. It seems like Pelican was on top of things more, and it may be because they had the help of getting all that picked up. And then also, I was gonna see if we could possibly just put a reminder in the B-mail or the publication that goes out. I've had a lot of people call, "My trash didn't get picked up, we pulled the video, their can wasn't out," reminding them that they start about 7:00 in the morning to get their can out the night before or either really early the next morning, because I think what they're doing, they're going, when they leave for work at 7:30, trucks already ran through, they missed it, just as a reminder that they may not come at that time every week, but there are times that they come through starting around 7:00, and so, to avoid getting your trash missed.
I've seen the latest edition that's about to roll out on the B News, and it includes some, some education on what to do with your trash, how to better prepare your trash to be picked up, and who to call if it doesn't-
And then also, possibly, when we do that, on the debris pickup, there are certain-sized piles and the wood, if we can maybe add that as well, you know?
It's in there.
Okay, good deal. Perfect. And I know I've, I've told you a thousand times, and just to keep it on the-
River Crest?
Oaklawn.
Oaklawn.
Yeah, right there in the curve, south of the fire station. It's just getting worse and worse. If we don't get that fixed, we're gonna end up with a car going off, the road's gonna end up collapsing.
I knew you were gonna ask, and I asked Billy Riddus before we came in here, and he said that Mike is watching it real close, he's trying to keep it from, you know, getting worse. And he's just, we just, so some of the emergencies, we haven't gotten to it yet.
Yeah, I know that they're, they're pulled in a lot of different directions, but it's just a really busy road. We have a lot of roads that need to be fixed, but that road's really busy, and I just don't want to see, see it collapse and somebody get hurt. And then I would like to say thanks for getting that ditch cleaned at the Eagle Point Park. We finally got that done, and so if we can stay on top of that, it'll be great. And then I know that we had discussed fencing in that pump station with a wooden fence to try to hide that out of the, in the Eagle Point Park, out of our water sewer fund.
I've measured it, and we'll issue a purchase order this week to a different company than Can't Be Beat Fence.
Perfect.
Only because we've given them so much work, they're having trouble keeping up, so we've got another vendor that we're gonna go with.
Good deal. And then I know that we had a lot, like a two-week debate on insurance, but I've gotten a lot of positive feedback from people that have used the insurance, especially on the prescription side of things, that they had good experience, and a lot of the prescriptions are actually less than they were on the prior insurance. And last, I would like to say happy birthday to Keith, and, you know, it's, it's one thing to cover big news stories when it's something that's on the front page or the leading deal, but I'd like to commend Keith for being here every week to, to cover everything, and so he's always here and always does a good job. Happy birthday, Keith. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Barrett, and happy birthday, Keith. You've been, I don't know how long you've been covering the council here, all your life, right? Just about. Anyway, you do, you do a good job. Happy birthday. I do want to take, thank Tom Lennberger, who spoke earlier about pickleball. I mean, there's the leadership behind getting pickleball, really. It was up and going, sort of, but he's really driven the membership and been here to push that issue. Good job, Tom. So when you talk about people who make a difference, that guy makes a difference. Thank you, Tom. And just a reminder to the administration, it would be great, again, if we included a self-addressed envelope for water bills when we mail them out. That way, folks could write those checks very quickly, stick them right in the envelope without having to wait or anything, and stick a stamp on it and then get it back to us. Pier repairs, somebody had asked me about the Forest Avenue pier. I think it's, it's, it has some damage from one of the storms, and I know that we've got several storms, so-
We issued a purchase order this week for four piers that are not badly damaged, one of which was the Forest Avenue pier.
Okay, good. So things are moving there on that pier. That's, somebody had asked me about that pier specifically. The other thing is, it's just a reminder on Oak Ridge Circle, that's one of the streets off Big Lake Road to the west. They've got part of the old golf course that's behind the residence on the west side of that street, and it's just, that property needs to be cut, mowed. It's not been, really, nothing's been done to it in a couple of years, and folks are antsy with winter coming up and dry brush, and they worry about that kind of stuff. I'd mentioned it before, but if somebody would follow up on that, I appreciate it. That concludes my remarks, my report. We'll move to the public agenda. We'll set aside up to 45 minutes for any comments from citizens. Each of, each speaker is limited to three minutes.
Each speaker is limited to three minutes. When you come up to speak, please come up to the table here, speaking to the microphone. You can sign in with your name and address, but also state your name clearly so that the clerk can record it accurately for the minutes. That being said, anybody on my left, your right, wish to address the council? My left, your right. Yes, sir. Please, please come up, have a seat, sign in, state your name for the clerk, and she'll hit the timer, and we're off to the races.
My name is Bob Helwig. I'm a resident of the Eagle Point area, and a lot of people are concerned about what they're seeing on the news from WLOX, that nobody's gotten any kind of response on or everything, about the new Pops Ferry causeway. The city council is supposed to be expanding or wanting to expand the no-wake zone out there. Now, there's a lot of boaters that use that area, going from Biloxi to Daberville, Gulfport, going north up to Shootacabuff and Biloxi River. And years ago, I've been on waterway there for 40 years. There used to be a regulation for under bridges, for no-wake zones. That is no longer in place. They no longer patrol that. There's no signs. I was by the DMIR's office earlier today, and even if the city council does vote to expand that, they have no control over it. They don't have authority to ticket any boater that goes, that speeds through that area. It's a city ordinance, and it would have to be patrolled, from what I'm told, by city officers, or boat patrol. So that would be another expense to the city. But I'm just wondering, I mean, nothing's ever been in writing now as far as wake zones. They put up no-wake zone signs on there. It's supposed to be 100 feet from the boat ramp. Well, there's no markings as far as who's going to determine where the 100-foot mark is. And there's no telling for boaters that go by there that it's a no-wake zone because they don't see any signs or anything. A lot of your, 80% of the boaters out in this area, in the coastal areas, are great, very considerate, concerned, but you do get some idiots that, you know, just have to, have to ignore everybody else's concerns and everything. But most people do. If they're close to the boat ramps, they will slow down. But the community now is seeing this on WLOX. They've been broadcasting it. They're saying the city council is supposed to meet and handle this. Why, that's why I went to my councilman and asked him about it, because a lot of people ask me. I've been in the boat business for 45, 25 years down here, and I'm retired, but a lot of people are curious about what's going to happen with that area, because they're talking, they're saying, oh, they want to develop it. They can't develop it. They can put more piers out there, but it's all marshlands. There's not going to be any businesses out there. You've got Yules Place, which should be protected by that 100-foot old law that you had to be a no-wake zone underneath the bridge, and with the law with the boat ramps. But there's nothing being said on the news. There's been no follow-up with the city council, and everybody that's a boater out there is just waiting to hear what's going to happen. So I'd like y'all to give some consideration and see, there doesn't need to be anything north of the boat ramp. There's no reason to make that a no-wake zone. Near the boat ramp and around to Yules and the bridge, you know, should be discussed and taken care of.
Thank you, Mr. Galloway, and I know the...
Helwig. It's H-E-L-W-I-G. Helwig.
Helwig, I'm sorry.
Helwig, Bob Helwig.
Gotcha. Thank you, Mr. Helwig. I know, I know the mayor and Mr. Leonard heard that, and they'll certainly move forward on getting the word out. And that's, again, that's one reason why we have B News, a monthly publication. But yeah, there's going to be some signage required, as I understand. At some point, it's going to be up, because sure, the public needs to know where it starts and stops.
Right, right. And I appreciate your time.
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Helwig. Anybody else on my left, your right? Anybody on my right, your left? Yes, ma'am, Ms. Shambra.
Hello, I'm Jane Shambra. I'm with the local history and genealogy department down the street on Howard Avenue in the Biloxi Library. I'm here to remind you that this evening, from 5:00 to 7:00, at the Biloxi Cemetery, we're going to have our 15th Annual Cemetery Tour, which we do each year. Last year, of course, it was virtual because of COVID. This year, repeating, we are repeating the same tour, a few little adjustments, but it'll be a great event. Sunday, we had about 600 people, roughly. It's a great community event. Not only do you learn about each individual family, but you learn a lot about what went on in the city, the history of the city. You learn about the WPA project in the Old City Hall, some of the businesses here, seafood industry and so forth. So if you know anybody that's got some free time, please invite them to come. If you want to learn a little more, check out the B News. There's always something cool in it as well. So we look forward to seeing you. It is free and open to the public. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Shambra. Anybody else on my right, your left? Anybody in the back? Okay, that concludes the public agenda for Citizens Comments. We'll move to the policy agenda. We have a couple of first readings. If the clerk would read item A, please.
Ordinance to rescind ordinance number 2457 pertaining to Chapter 8, the Flood Damage and Prevention Ordinance.
I'll entertain the motion by Mr. Lawrence, second, by Mr. Gans. It's a first reading, so we'll move to the next item, item B.
Ordinance amending Section 596, bases for determining dwellings to be unfit of Chapter 5 of the building codes.
I'll entertain a motion, second. Motion by Mr. Lawrence, I believe.
Lawrence Gans.
Motion by Mr. Gans. Somebody coughed, so I didn't...
Lawrence Gans.
Lawrence and Gans, thank you.
My dad's name, Lawrence Gans.
And that's a first reading. That brings us to item C. This begins several second readings. The clerk would read item C, please.
Ordinance to amend Chapter 18 entitled Cemeteries of the Code of Ordinances.
The motion was by Mr. Lawrence, and the second was by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Lawrence, comments?
Yeah, I do have a few comments. I want the council itself to think about, we have a limited amount of space now in the cemetery, and we're putting some kind of restrictions on these grave sites. And I think probably we'll remove the limitations. There's no other place to bury. We don't have that many plots to do. We have no problem with the plots, the platted plots that we have. But I don't think, you know, in some of these plots, 10 by 10, you could put probably 20 cremations in there. So there's no reason to have a limitation. You buy a mazalim above ground and put 15, 20. There's no limitation on it. So I don't see why we have a limitation or anything you put in the ground. So I need the council itself to look at that. If you want to pass it without the limitations, and you go back and you start selling the plots. But I'm just saying, you know, a coffin roughly 30 inches by 80 inches, just about two inches, two feet deep, but I've been to several of the, few of them lately, are more cremations. And cremations, those things, 7 by 10, you can put a plenum in there. You could double stack them. The National Cemetery, right now, has run out of space. So with the people that bury in the National Cemetery, they're going to put two coffins in the gravesite. Same problem we have. Space is so limited, and we have no place to expand to. So I made my thing to the council, I don't think there should be limitations on anything you put on the ground. There's really not a limitation to anything you put above the ground. So I don't see what the difference is. So I need everybody to think about that. If you want to pass this without the limitations, then fine. We can come back, do what you want to do. All people want to do is start selling them, you know? He wants to try to make money. He ain't interested about how many people you put in there. But my theory is, my theory is, is if you do a lot of cremations, like at a 10 by 10, I mean, you could probably put 20 in there without any trouble. So that's what I, that's food of thought for y'all.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Lawrence, Mr. Barrett.
Yeah, only question I have is, this is just pertaining to the Biloxi Cemetery, correct?
Correct.
That's all I have.
Any other discussion?
I have a question. How many cemeteries do we have? Mr. Barrett said this pertains only to the Biloxi Cemetery, so there's a portion of that south of the railroad tracks. There's a portion of that north of the railroad tracks. That's what we're talking about now. There are other cemeteries in the city. I know there are several in Wool Market, I think. I don't know all the locations. Are those public cemeteries? Do we know?
Those are private. Southern Memorial and the, up on Wool Market, next to the old gas station. What's that? Is that Wool Market Cemetery?
Oh, you're talking about Coalville.
Coalville. Those are private cemeteries.
There's several of them. There's that one, then you have several that churches have as well. There's one right there at the end of Cedar Lake Road, right at 67, at the Methodist Church.
Another little piece of useless information. No difference between a cemetery and a graveyard?
Say that again?
The difference between a cemetery and a graveyard. He touched upon it. A graveyard is attached to a church.
Okay. Got to remember that for jeopardy.
TV land, you know, learn something.
And I recall that we had a speaker during Citizens Comments, this was probably four or five years ago, that just reminded us all that there was no more space in the city cemetery at that time. So we're fixing to approve the additional plating of 57 lots here before today.
59.
59?
As you pointed out.
Before, before we leave today, hopefully, we'll do that. And this just, as Mr. Lawrence pointed out, it's just the restrictions on how many urns or how many caskets could be placed in each of those plots that are planted.
Right. I could speak to that a little bit of where we've come. And we started the cemetery ordinance, I think about a year ago, last October, and we had a lot of, you know, some concerns by Mr. Lawrence about we're requiring no temporary monuments, tents needed to be taken down a certain time. And so we removed all that. There was a perpetual care requirement. We removed that. Basically, everything's been removed that he was not happy with, except we modified a little bit of the requirements. These lots are 10 by 10, and like he said, a typical casket is roughly three feet by seven feet. And, so if you put three in there side by side, there's really not much room for dirt. And, you know, we're selling these as a lot, allowing, in a 10 by 10 lot, you can have two caskets, two cremains, or alternatively, up to six cremains. By comparison, I know we don't necessarily care what any other city is doing, but in the Gulfport Cemeteries, they have those same sort of requirements. In a, they sell four by tens, or five by tens, which is half of ours, and they only allow one casket or one cremain. So I agree that we've never had space before. We're going to have space. We're still going to be able to look in other areas of the cemetery and create, we're looking to create additional lots where we can find them down the road. And if we get so overcrowded that there is a big hue and cry about, I'd like to get in the cemetery, but there's a limitation, I'd just say we come back and put, take the limitations off at a future date. But we took off the part about the number of monuments. You know, we're doing this new third addition, 13th addition, and my thought was, you'd want them to kind of all be kind of consistent, like you have in the, in the, at the VA, not to just have one 10 by 10 with 20 urns in it. You know, you kind of want to have it a little consistent. But that's my thought. However y'all want to deal with it, or, you know, I do want it to start getting this, getting this going.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Abid, Mr. Lawrence.
Well, I go back then, I like to amend that to take the numbers out.
All right. When you...
I mean, a one call for the two urns, I like to just eliminate the numbers on those specifics. And if you want to come back with a certain number later, fine. But I mean, that's just, that's not enough. That's too small. When you could actually have, you know, I'm telling you, get a mazalim, you put 15 urns in there. Nobody cares. Put you in the ground, you can't put but two or four? That don't make sense. It's 10 by 10.
As I'm looking at my notes currently, in a four by eight lot, you're permitted, as this ordinance is presented, one body or two cremains in a four by eight lot, or two bodies and two cremains, with up to six cremains in a 10 by 10 lot. And I think, are those the only numbers you're referring to?
Right, correct.
So Mr. Abid was just suggesting, we approve it as it is, and we can come back and modify this later. Mr. Lawrence is saying, just, just leave the number restrictions right now. Leave that out entirely. And at some point, we can, we can come back and look at that. I don't know how many cremains is reasonable to put in a 10 by 10 plot. I don't know how much room you need, but as Mr. Lawrence, an urn is an urn. They're not huge. Anyway, I'm interested. Are there any other comments or thoughts from the council? Mr. Lawrence, did you want to present that as an amendment?
Let them in that eliminate the numbers of coffins and urns and the grave sites. That'd be the 10 by 10 and the four by 10.
Is there a second?
Four by eight, what is a four by eight?
Well, there's 10 by tens and four by eights, and there are different restrictions on each.
To those.
All right. So there's a motion by Mr. Lawrence to remove just those restrictions dealing with the number of bodies and cremains in the four by eight and the 10 by 10 lots. So there would be no restrictions. Is there a second?
I'll second.
There's a second by Mr. Gans. There'll be a further discussion. All in favor of the amendment as presented? Okay. Any opposed? Okay, so let me count noses again. If you're in favor of the amendment, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Good. That's approved on a 7-0 vote.
Okay, so we just strike the first sentence of B?
I have a quick question. This really can only apply to the urns because
No.
you can't fit any more caskets in that, that area than what...
According, oh, he says you can. You can do them vertically, you could do them on top of each other.
If you want to.
However you want.
That's correct. Okay, so that was approved on a 7-0 vote. The amendment was approved. So striking only that portion dealing with the restrictions in terms of the number of bodies or cremains in each of those two-size lots. We'll now vote on the ordinance as amended. I'll need a motion.
Quick unwritiness.
Sorry. Go ahead, Mr. Gans.
You also charged him with coming back with a number later, right?
Correct.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
So that, so that provision was that we can always come back if that's an issue? Okay.
Did you open up the door? So we're charging him with the number to come back for what, the appropriate amount to be put in these things?
Correct.
Yet we're amending this to strike all of these restrictions to then reamend it? Why don't we either one-table it and ask them to come back with a number at a date specified, so we can address it, or this seems all like a waste of time?
This is, this is, this is the number I, I mean, I feel like this is the right way to do it and the right number. If y'all want to put more in or have no limitations, that doesn't matter. But I mean, it's been tabled, it's tabled first for a year. So I mean, if I come back and say three, George says 20. I mean, it's, it's, let's just put a number on it or no number. It doesn't matter to me.
Well, there's nothing to preclude any council member from getting this on the agenda six months from now and putting a revised ordinance out there to put restrictions on at that time. That could be at the next council meeting or a year from now. I think, I don't mean to speak for Mr. Lawrence, but I believe his intent was, as I understood it, that at some point in the future, we can come back and address this. The one concern is, is after our actions today, at some point in the very near future, these 59 plots that have been replatted now are going to go on sale. I would think they would go quickly. And then at some point, somebody's going to say, have a family of six. Can we all share the same plot? Well, today you can, but it may be a year from now, if we come back with restrictions, you can't. So to me, it's six of one and half a dozen of the other, personally. I didn't mean to cut you off, Mr. Demme, if you have more.
You didn't cut me off.
Okay. So the amendment was approved, removing those restrictions. We'll call for the question then, if there's no more discussion on the amended ordinance as presented. All in favor? as presented, all in favor? All opposed? Just seven oh vote for the clerk, thank you. The clerk would read item D, please.
Ordinance to amend section twenty-three, three, five, six of the Code of Ordinances to designate an additional building as a Biloxi landmark.
The motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, and the second was made by Mr. Barrett. Mr. Lawrence, comments?
Give us an update. Please.
Yes, sir. Okay, so we have two on for today. One is two thirty-seven Main Street, one of the last residential structures that are left in that stretch of Main Street between Division Street and the railroad tracks. And the house dates to about nineteen hundred, has been changed significantly over the year, but what really swayed the commission on voting in favor of this one is because they talk about the history of the house and how it's changed from just a single-family residential house to how time changed, it later became, there was an addition on the side that's still there today, that was put in for a beauty parlor, and then how they use the front parlor for laying people out for viewings at funerals and that kind of thing, working with the church next door. And when they talked about the house, and the family's had that house since nineteen twenty-two, that still has it today. So they voted in favor of that one. The other one is five-five-one Howard Avenue, which is right next to the Oyster House, right there at Lee Street, it's the second house over, dates back to about eighteen ninety-five. It is actually a contributing structure in the East Howard Avenue National Registered District. That was a no-brainer, that one is so well intact, it's one of the best intact houses on the street. The only changes are really on the back, that you can't see from the street, there was a little addition on the back.
Thank you, Billy.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Mr. Barrett, any comments?
I recommend approval.
All right, thank you, Mr. Lawrence. Any other discussion?
All right, all in favor?
It's approved on a seven oh vote, thank you. The clerk would read item E.
Ordinance to amend section nine-one-twenty-two of the code pertaining to garbage collection fees.
The motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, and the second was made by Mr. Guines. Mr. Lawrence?
I think what we're doing here is just cleaning up the figure, the number, correct? We're making the number, the right number in the resolution.
You had already voted on this one before, and there just was a, what I thought was a Scribner's era, in the, we therefore are, had the wrong number.
Right. Resolution matches the number now.
Yeah, and I would point you towards the article in today's shout-out about Gulfport's fees in today's newspaper.
Well, this, to be clear, this raises six cents, I had six cents, right? Like an administrative fee or something, and when I read it, I don't recall what the fee was called, but it was, it was an additional six cents to something.
Right.
Correct? And that's what this is doing?
The second was by Mr. Guines, she's not here, any other comments or concerns? Yeah, I believe this was, I don't want to say misadvertised, it was advertised in this particular fee.
It was advertised at fifteen seventy-five, it was in the newspaper at fifteen seventy-five, that was our notice of intent.
Right, so the total hadn't changed, we're just explaining-
It's written fifteen seventy-five.
Right, we're just explaining and correctly calculating how we got to fifteen seventy-five, basically. Okay. All in favor of the ordinance as presented?
Okay.
All opposed? It's approved on a five-one vote. That brings us to item F. If the clerk would read that resolution, please.
Resolution authorize an approval and dedication of the thirteenth edition of the Biloxi Cemetery.
Motion was made by Mr. Lawrence, and I made the second. Mr. Lawrence, any comments?
This is just actually plating out the sizes and everything, it's just something that you'd have to do.
Right.
No biggie.
Like a subdivision, sort of.
Plated out.
Okay, I have no comment to add to that. Any other comments, concerns? All in favor of the resolution as presented? It's approved on a six oh vote, thank you. That brings us to the consent agenda, is air motion?
The mode.
Mr. Lawrence? Air second by Mr. Glavine. Mr. Lawrence, in looking through these, are there any questions about any of the items?
On A and B, is this not costing us any more money? There's some more with the court, what is this, we just appointing these people?
Yeah, it's in the budget.
Say again?
It's in the budget.
They just have to be appointed, so they're already there.
And I got, on the, I think it's O, we mined four mowers, we're going to have people who are going to push these mowers.
We're working on it.
We got four, four brand new mowers, somebody's got to be working them.
Oh, come on, I am O.
And the one on Q, with the public safety building, I know we fixing this building up, how about empty space, chief, that we, are we, anything moving on the second floor, the second floor or third floor we got to fix up?
No, we're not doing anything on the, on the third floor. What Q is, Q is to move, I'm sorry, there's two, there's two on there for the same thing. One is G, G is to move the money out of seized money to pay for Q. And Q is a, is a system that will be able to put into, it actually runs through the air conditioner system, it uses a hydrogen peroxide type base stuff to cleanse the, cleanse everything in the building. So instead of having to go around and wipe down for COVID every day, this is, this will automatically kill it. We have to change the filters on it every couple of years, it's like five grand, we have to change the filters on it. But we're wasting a lot of time, not really wasted, but we're using a lot of time going around, trying to keep everything wiped down, we have a lot of people in and out all day long, and this will eliminate a good portion of that.
That's a good thing. Make sure we got to keep that other thing in mind, too.
Yes, sir.
Pick up that floor, whatever it takes.
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Yeah. Why? Is this somebody behind, completely behind for the city, or is this a contract worker? This Gary Richards?
Compliance.
We, one of the problems that we've had over time with our underground storage tanks is they get inspected occasionally by MDEQ, and there are a number of records that have to be kept, and we haven't done so well passing that test. So for a very small fee, we hire this guy to come in and do the paperwork for us. Just keeping track of the, of the fuel issues and receipts and losses and so, at the harbor.
That's a good thing, probably. On the, and the gentleman talked about the no wake, exactly how we're going to handle all that, when we pass it?
Well, you saw I handed him the resolution that you all passed last time around. That resolution basically takes us, the process is, we have to go to the county to ask the county to ask DMR, and, and they have, and DMR has came back and said they wanted to expand the zone a little bit further, so we went, we've gone back through again with a revision to the length of the, of the no wake zone. That will go to the county, the county will go to DMR, and DMR will approve it, and then they say that they will help us to enforce it.
You're right, and I think some of the buoys that'll be installed, like it's a point cadet marine in the no wake zones, there'll be similar thing. Now they've been talking about the buoys that will show, that will be floating, so the boats will see, hey, no wake, no wake.
So we'll have the county and DMR, everybody be involved in it.
Right.
Okay, just kind of following up what he was, some of the things they say is true, you know, so I don't know, that's just something you put on the table and we'll go from there, and they can be changed, so, thank you.
Is that it, Mr. Lawrence?
That's it.
Thank you, Mr. Guines, anything? Ms. Newman, anything? Nothing? Mr. Demme?
Yeah. Couple things, chief. If you'll grab the microphone, it's three of them. Just what, the memorandum of understanding with the police department, it said that they're going to have a special location reserved for Biloxi for training, what training are we doing out at the?
Which one are you talking about?
It's E. It's E.
E.
Echo, echo.
Using, very good.
Yeah, that's mostly for the bomb squad, we're the only bomb squad around, so if the airport needs a bomb squad, they're going to call us. They have a designated area out there that we do training in for that type of situation, for explosive situation.
Okay, good deal. Then the H, H, what, what, police credit reporting software, what do we use that for?
Whenever we're hiring, we always do a credit report, whenever we're hiring, it's part of our hiring process, and this is the cheapest way to do it, I forget, it's like thirteen dollars an applicant if we do it this way.
Okay.
Background check.
Lastly, L, I guess Wesley Brant, Wesley Brantley's retiring after twenty-six years?
Lima. Weapon for a retiring police officer.
Lima, L?
Larry. Yeah, 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 state law allows for the officer to purchase his sidearm upon retirement.
No, I'm happy about that. The question, I was just curious, is it always twenty-five dollars?
Yeah, it's set by state law, twenty-five dollars.
All right, if you'll, if you'll see me afterwards, I want to-
Okay.
-talk to you about that.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Demme. Mr. Glavine, anything?
Yeah, on V, if we're supporting this, the only thing I'd ask the administration is if we could get somebody from the Mississippi Gulf Coast Chamber of Commerce to come and tell us the specifics of the two thousand twenty-two beer, or Craft Beer Fest, to be held on March twenty-six, twenty twenty-two, I think it would be useful for the city council to hear a little bit more of the details of what is planned, how many visitors, and some of the particulars. That's all I'm requesting, if we can just invite them to come give a brief report. That's all I have.
Thank you, Mr. Glavine. Mr. Barrett, anything?
Have nothing.
And I have nothing as well. All right, we'll call for the question on the consent agenda, all in favor of the agenda as presented. It's a seven oh vote, any exceptions? Mr. Demme, which item, please?
A, A, Alpha, Alpha.
Okay, okay. That's the only one. All right, thank you. That brings us to code enforcement hearings. Mr. Creo?
Item A, Joanna Jackson and J.S. Fairley, three thirty-four Crusus Street, this property's still in violation.
All right. All right, is there anyone here to speak on this matter, three thirty-four Crusus Street, Johanna Jackson and J.S. Fairley? Anybody to speak on this matter? Okay, then this hearing is closed, thank you. That brings us to the routine agenda.
The mode.
There's a motion by Mr. Lawrence. A second by Mr. Guines.
Walt. Good afternoon, council. Within the past week, the city of Biloxi has received two payments from MEMA, reimbursement in advances totaling one point nine two zero million. And we have an additional one point two eight five million, which is in step three of five. When it gets to the next step, step four or five, it usually takes fifteen days to get to us, so probably by the first week of November, I'm hoping to see it in our coffers.
So we're standing up pretty close to the best, but we're doing well.
Thank you.
That's a good thing. Mayor, one question to you with the nine million, are we paying out? You got any coming from the gaming and everything, what is on that, on the routine? There's nine million.
I'm not sure.
Section six of the- We got everything listed, it's Ada Pepper, you got the collection from gaming.
Diane is here, I'm not sure exactly what that is. Exhibit C, we have an exhibit C.
So you created that nine million, you paid out, that's all I'm asking you.
Yeah, 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 right, exactly.
I'll ask Mike later, that's okay.
Anything else on the routine agenda? Any other questions on the routine agenda?
Any question?
All right, we'll call for the question, all in favors presented. It's approved on a seven oh vote, thank you. I'll entertain a motion to recess. By Mr. Lawrence, by Mr. Guines, thank you, all in favor. It's approved on a seven oh vote, thank you.